Good evening. I'd like to call to order the regular meeting of Newport News School Board for Tuesday, May 20th, 2025. On behalf of the members of the school board and Dr. Mitchell, I welcome each of you present this evening and those who are watching on TV and online. A quorum is present to transact the business of the school division. We will begin tonight's meeting with the invocation and pledge to the flag. Here to do the honors is a student from Yates Elementary, Lillian Leatherbury. Lillian, will you please come forward and tell us a little bit about yourself?
Hello, my name is Lillian Leatherbury. I'm a fifth grader at Yates Elementary School. I enjoy reading fiction. Fantasy is my favorite. I also like to sing, so much that I got selected to go to the All Virginia Choir. One of my hobbies is drawing. I mostly draw people. I am here today to read two poems about moving on from fifth grade and going to sixth grade. The author of both poems are unknown. Poem one, "The Open Door." "The bell has rung, a final chime; our elementary days are fading in time. We've learned and grown, with laughter bright now open doors to a future light. The halls we knew now seem so grand as we step out, hand in hand. Though bittersweet the tears may fall, we'll carry memories standing tall." Poem two, "The Bridge We Cross." "We've built a bridge of chalk and clay through lessons learned, come what may. Now we stand on the other side, with newfound knowledge we stride. The bridge we crossed with eager feet, a chapter closed, bittersweet. But in our hearts the memories stay of our elementary's bright sunny day." I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Lillian, thank you so much. You did a wonderful job. Did you bring some special people with you this evening? Who do you have with you? Your mom and dad. Mom and dad, thank you. We appreciate you bringing Lillian this evening to start our meeting off, starting it off in style. Thank you. So we do have some public officials in our midst this morning, or this evening. We have Rob Coleman from our city council. Partner to the school division. We appreciate, appreciate you immensely. And we also have delegate Chad Green. We're gonna get the pleasure to hear from him during our open speak. So we will, we will hear what you have to share with us at that time. So the next item on our agenda are board recognitions of Dr. Mitchell. If you would, join me at the podium.
Good evening. NNP's families, students, and staff, I have the honor and privilege of presenting this month's school board recognitions. Let's get started. This evening, we're proud to recognize and celebrate the accomplishments of a high school music program that has earned a top honor. The music department at Minchfield High School was awarded the Virginia Music Educators Association 2025 Blue Ribbon Award. Present this evening to accept this recognition on behalf of the Minchfield Music Department, our band director, Deborah Sarve. Would you please come forward? Orchestra director, Anna Moyer. Would you please come forward? And choral director, Zenab Bustafa. We're also like to acknowledge their proud principal, Jason Holla, and NNP's supervisor of Visual and Performing Arts, Katie Smith. The Virginia Music Educators Association Blue Ribbon Award is the highest award given to a school music program and recognizes achieved excellence in band, orchestra, and choral performance. To earn this distinction, all music disciplines in the school must receive a rating of superior during the state assessment. And each of the top performing group from every ensemble earn a superior rating performing two pieces of music from approved grade music lists. All performing groups had to cite, read, can you believe that? All performing groups had to cite, read, and cite, sing to be eligible for the award during the association's district concert performance assessment. In addition, their performance during the district events, the choral ensembles, orchestra, and band had performed at numerous events, showcasing their talents and bringing honor and pride to their school communities. Please join me again in congratulating Minchfield for earning this distinction. Congratulations to you and your musicians. Now we're gonna take a quick photo. Also this year, one of our high school bands earned top honors for the Virginia Band and Orchestra Directors Association. The Virginia Honored Band Distinction was created forty-five years ago to recognize high school bands with a comprehensive program. We're proud to again congratulate Minchfield High School for earning distinction as a Virginia Honored Band. Joining us this evening to accept this recognition, honey, you may have to stay up here. This recognition on behalf of Minchfield Band is band director Deborah Sarve. Bands achieving superior rating at the state marching event band festival and at a district concert festivals are recognized as an honor band, the highest award that can be bestowed upon bands by the Virginia Band and Orchestra Directors Association. This year marks the eleventh time, I'll say it again, this year marks the eleventh time Minchfield has received this prestigious award. Again, we're also like to acknowledge Minchfield principal, Jason Holla, and Mrs. Katie Sheehan Smith. Would you please stand? And again, congratulations, Ms. Sarve, to you and your band members. I'm gonna take another photo. Our next honorees are gifted musicians. They're among the best high school vocalists and instrumentalists in the state and have earned the All Virginia Distinction. To reach this accomplishment, high school students must audition and earn a top chair or space in the district event, which makes them eligible to audition for All Virginia Ensemble. Newport News Public Schools is proud to recognize seven students who have earned this honor tonight. As I call your name, please come forward to receive your recognition. Name to the All Virginia Band from Minchfield High School under the direction of band director Deborah Sarve are Kristen Wenin, Abigail Mayer, and Connor Landers. From Woodside High School, under the guidance of band director Brian Greby, is All Virginia Band honoree Liam Barnstead. Four times? Oh, congratulations. We would like to add, hey, it's written right here. We would like to add that Liam is a four-time selection for All Virginia Band honors and acknowledge that this is an incredible accomplishment. Can someone say American Idol? So name to All Virginia Chorus from Warwick High School and under the leadership of chorus director Lynn Baloo, Natley, or Natley Carmen, Casey York. From Woodside High School, under the direction of chorus director Emilio Present, I'm sorry, Pensant Presonten, and Tyron Wheeler. Is Tyron here? Wheeler, Ms. Wheeler? Oh, she has, okay. What selection to All Virginia Ensemble represents the highest honor that the Virginia Music Educators Association can bestow upon a student musician. It is a testament to the hard work and discipline of our students, the direction of our music teachers, and the constant support of their families. This All Virginia honorees participated in a two-day series of rehearsals featuring a guest conductor and participated in a full group performance. Congratulations to all our state band and chorus honorees. We would like to acknowledge and thank student families. If you could please stand and be recognized, it's like the whole room. Y'all stand up, stand up. Absolutely. We would also like to acknowledge their principals, who may be with us this evening. Jason Holla from Minchfield. Tiffany Thompson from Warwick and Dr. Mary Hardisty from Woodside. As well as Woodside Magnet Program Administrator, Amy Ensley, and Mrs. Sheehan Smith. Okay, everyone, we're gonna take a quick photo. NNP's students had the opportunity to participate in the co-ed club sport of archery through the National Archery in the school's program that is made available to all grade levels. This program is growing and popular. Tonight, we'll recognize students who competed at the NASP 2025 U.S. Eastern Nationals on May 8th through 10th in Lewisville, Kentucky. Students qualified through their performances at the state tournament. Please come forward as your name is called to receive your recognition. We will take a photo with all archery students outside the auditorium during our break. From B.C. Charles Elementary School Archery Team, Sophia Carberly? Cobberly? Come on, Sophia. And Violet Singatary. B.C. Charles head coach, Benalyn Williams, and assistant coach, Pat Busky. We would also like to thank and acknowledge this evening their family members who may be present, as well as B.C. Charles Principal Aurel Robinson-Taylor. Please stand and be recognized if you're in the room. Congratulations, B.C. Charles. And again, we'll take a group photo during the break. From Richneck Elementary School's archery team, Alyana Austin. Come on down, girl. Jaleah Austin. Jaleah Austin. Cameron Blow. Come on, Cameron. Kaylin Bromwell. Vincent Bush. Donovan Crandell. Ava Crawford. Alexander Gargulis. Jace Gorterez. Aviana Lopez Cruz. Chelsea Means. Cameron Moore. Riley Pierce. Rebecca Penner. Rita Raza. Benjamin Sagato. Jackson Vestre. And Tina Willard. Richneck's head coach is Lindsey Sessions and assistant coach is Virginia Buck Speed. NNP's family, Richneck was the only NNP's team to qualify for Nationals as a team in both the Bullseye and the 3D events. We would like to also thank and acknowledge this evening their family members and who may be present and Richneck principal Rhonda Chambers-Harmon. Is she here? Please stand to be, please stand to be recognized. Yes, families of these beautiful children or if you're in the audience, please stand to be recognized and the principal, please stand to be recognized. Awesome. We want to again say congratulations, Richneck, and we'll take our group photo during our break. Thank you again. They got the shirts on, got their names on the back and everything. From Ella Fitzgerald Middle School's archery team, Hadessa Bates. James Campbell. Olivia Giles. Is Olivia here? Ava Henderson. Kiara Henderson. Okay, Tahaa Husani. Gabrielle Jackson. Ayana Jones. Hero Kleinfeld. Danielle Lomax. Elizabeth McCain, McLean, I'm sorry. Cameron McClinton. Kaylin Melrose. Isabella Norman. Marlee Parham. Lealita Salar. Leila Silas. I'm sorry, Miss Buffalo College ass. Joey Stanley. Zoe Stanley. Josiah Turner. Jacoby Velez. All right, Ella Fitzgerald head coach is Josh Cerny. We would also like to also thank and acknowledge this evening their family members and who may be present with us and Ella Fitzgerald Middle School principal, Dr. Jaron Ransom. Families, if you're here representing these beautiful students, please take a stand. Congratulations, Ella Fitzgerald.
Thank you. We'll go on to the next one.
From Minchfield High School Archery Team, Emilio Arzas. Minchfield. Is Emilio here? No. Okay, Sebastian Arsenalt. Madeline Usler. Cal Lachet Leggett. Naseya Lopez Sanchez. Dorinda Ludi. Lit, it's not here. Okay, Nicholas Mazzola. Alia Mapenga. Elizabeth Ainge. No, you're fine. Janay Nicholson. They're all together somewhere. Kayla Osborne. Amy Queen. Okay, Ivan Rodriguez. Agres. Anthony Roman. Lillian Roman. Are these siblings? Congratulations. They're twins. Oh, okay. That's, that's awesome. Cecilia Sherman. Aiden Shirley. Come on, Aiden. Leslie Turner. Minchfield's head coach is Daniel Cerny. Come on down. We would, we would like to also thank and acknowledge this evening their family members who may be present. Please stand. I did not, but come on down.
Patrick Busky.
Hey, Patrick Busky. That's right. And also in the audience is the principal of Minchfield High School, Jason Holla. And activities director, Cheryl Chapel. Is she here with us? Okay. At this time, we'll also like to thank the NNP's instructional supervisor for health and physical education, Jennifer Moran, for all of her department's support for the archery program. So please stand up if you're here to be recognized. Is she not with us this evening? All right, so congratulations, Minchfield. You may have a seat. And remember, we're gonna take a photo at the break. So again, as a reminder, we ask that all archery students please gather outside the auditorium for a photo during the break. But at this time, we're going to take about a seven-minute break so there are presenters and guests and their families may leave if they wish to do so. You're certainly welcome to stay. We got a lot of stuff on the agenda, good stuff. Oh, I would like to also recognize that our mayor is in the house this evening, Mayor Philip Jones. Thank you for being here. Families during the break, our viewing artists will have an opportunity to view the month's school board spotlight, so we will stand at recess for about seven minutes. Thank you.
For half a century, Ella Fitzgerald Middle School has been encouraging learners, growing leaders, and promoting achievers. On April 25th, the birthday of the school's namesake, Ella Fitzgerald celebrated fifty years as a school. Elected officials, school board members, and school leaders were joined by former Fitzgerald educators, staff members, and principals who have shaped the legacy of the school and the undeniable impact it has had on our community. Principal Jaron Ransom, superintendent Dr. Michelle Mitchell, and student leaders reflected on the school's past while looking towards the future with great anticipation. School board vice chair, Dr. Terry Best, read a commemorative proclamation issued by Newport News Public Schools. To honor the queen of jazz as the school's namesake, a number of musical selections by Echoes of Ella Jazz Ensemble entertained the crowd, as well as a passionate performance from from former student and current chorus teacher Adina Harris. The day's festivities took place on a newly constructed stage assembled by eighth grade math teacher Eric Johnson and a group of dedicated students. This will serve the students and staff as an outdoor classroom and gathering space for years to come. And just like the first lady of song herself, the students at Ella Fitzgerald Middle School will continue to dream big while building a legacy rooted in determination, resilience, and unity. Through the month of April, Heinz Middle School celebrated the month of the military child with a variety of fun activities and special experiences for students. Military liaison Ashley Waters and family and community engagement specialist Kimberly Callaway hosted a number of engaging events, giving all students a chance to sample the many benefits the military has to offer. The month kicked off with a military expo, allowing each grade to visit with military recruiters from each branch, explore future career options, and even complete some extra pushups to earn some great swag. Physical training increased during a simulated bootcamp experience. Any interested students were invited to see if they have what it takes to make it through basic training with Army Sergeant John Ewing and physical education teacher Patrick Palmer Scott, who is a retired Marine. Through a number of workout stations, students improved their physical and mental strength, boosted confidence, and worked as a team to complete the specialized training. And at the end of the month, military-connected children enjoyed a barbecue party in their honor. Temple Baptist Church donated food, drinks, and snacks while volunteering their time alongside Newport News Police Officers to offer students a fun lunch with free food and games. For students who experience frequent relocations, prolonged separation from deployed parents, and many other challenges, the month of the military child is a chance for Heinz Middle School to honor these brave and resilient students. Incorporating arts into everyday learning offers a boost for our youngest scholars. For the second year, master teaching artists with the Wolf Trap Institute for Early Learning Through the Arts partnered with Newport News Preschools to weave movement, artistic creativity, and an added dose of imagination into the young students' classroom learning. Funding through a Virginia Department of Education grant brings this internationally respected program to NNPS, providing preschool students, educators, and families with innovative and engaging arts-based strategies to enhance the learning experience. For two separate weeks in the late fall, master teaching artists visited several preschool classrooms at Denby Early Childhood Center, Marshall Early Learning Center, and Watkins Early Childhood Center. The talented singers, dancers, actors, storytellers, and puppeteers worked closely with classroom educators to creatively integrate artistic expressions into the current curriculum. Each day, the classroom educators did more co-teaching with the master artists, allowing them to learn firsthand how to implement these creative teaching techniques on their own. The teaching artists even worked in dual-language immersion classrooms, teaching through songs, counting, and literacy in both Spanish and English. Workshops for dual-language immersion families were also offered in the evening, inviting parents and caregivers to actively join the learning process and see how creative learning through the arts thrives even beyond language barriers. With the creative guidance of the Wolf Trap Institute's creative artists, our students, teachers, and families are using the power of art to build confidence, knowledge, and community. Christopher Newport University and Newport News Public Schools have expanded their collaborative research project Fear to Hope to include hands-on experiences through field research. Fear to Hope, now in its fourth year, is an ongoing collaboration that brings together environmental professionals, university professors, and college student mentors who guide high school students as they study the effects of rising sea levels and the salt tolerance of Atlantic white cedar. Starting the school year, Fear to Hope is giving NNPS high school students the opportunity to venture outside the classroom and participate in real-world conservation efforts through authentic scientific research. A few miles from CNU, on the opposite shore of the James River, is Ragged Island Wildlife Management Area with over 1,500 acres of salt marsh and small pine islands where visitors can hike, fish, hunt, and birdwatch. But Ragged Island is also experiencing a rapidly eroding shoreline, losing several feet every year, which is causing the formation of ghost forests and widespread loss of wildlife habitats and the salt marsh ecosystem. But with an $8 million grant, CNU is partnering with Virginia Department of Wildlife Resources and Ducks Unlimited to undertake a habitat and shoreline restoration project. Already this school year, students from Heritage, Minchfield, Warwick, and Woodside High Schools have joined CNU student mentors at Ragged Island to conduct a range of field research. During each trip through the marshland, students are actively involved in collecting tree core samples, testing water quality, mapping and measuring plant communities, documenting marine species, and collecting and removing debris from the valuable ecosystem. Through these collaborative efforts and invaluable hands-on learning opportunities, high school students are expanding their scientific knowledge and research skills while playing a practical role in restoring a declining ecosystem and offering great hope for a bright future. Students across Newport News Public Schools enjoyed a once-in-a-lifetime experience to perform alongside Miss Virginia. As part of her community service initiative, Carlia Swanson has been visiting schools and nursing homes across the Commonwealth as a performing artist and motivational speaker. In partnership with Sing for Hope, a nonprofit organization focused on harnessing the power of the arts to create a better world, Miss Virginia presented her Bridging the Divide Music is Unity Program to share music's healing power. At Hilton and MacIntosh Elementary Schools, students enjoyed learning about scatting, the vocal improvisation technique made famous in vocal jazz. At Hilton, a team of professional musicians accompanied Miss Virginia as they performed a range of songs honoring America's original art form of jazz. While at MacIntosh, a talented music student from Woodside High School was invited to perform with Miss Virginia. And at Woodside High School, music students enrolled in the Arts and Communications Magnet Program enjoyed a range of songs as Miss Virginia shared how music has influenced her life, the importance of music in everyone's life, and how music can bring communities together by fostering empathy, diversity, and unity.
I hope you enjoyed this month's school board spotlight. During our regular meetings, we provide time for the public to address the school board. These opportunities are scheduled in the early part of our agenda and towards the end of the meeting. As advertised, citizens may submit comments via email up until 30 minutes prior to our meeting time to be included in the official meeting record. For those of you joining us in person, the board considers this an opportunity to listen to your comments. Please understand that we will consider your concerns. We ask that you comply with our three-minute time limit. As you begin your comments, a green light will come on, a yellow light signals you have 30 seconds remaining, and a red light and beep indicates your time is up. As your name is called, please come forward. And our first speaker this evening is Delegate Chad Green. It's my pleasure to welcome him to the podium as our first speaker. Member of the Virginia Assembly, Delegate Green represents the 69th District, which includes parts of Newport News and parts of the counties of Gloucester, Jame City, and York. He serves on the House Education Committee. I'll say that again. He serves on the House Education Committee and the Privileged and Election Committee. During the past General Assembly session, Delegate Green sponsored a commending resolution for the youth development program in Newport News Public Schools and also hosted a tour of the General Assembly for students and staff. We appreciate his efforts and welcome him here to present the resolution. Delegate Green, you do not have to adhere to the three-minute rule.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I've been dying to do what I'm about to do all night, and that is... I, I also had a conversation with student member Verde that he could change his name to Green, and maybe we were related, so. It's, it's a pleasure to be here. It's a pleasure to see all the high-achieving youth, and it was a pleasure to host the Youth Development Group this year. I just want to go through this resolution very quickly. I know you've got a lot of business to do, but House Joint Resolution 556 commending the Newport News Public Schools Youth Development. This was agreed to by the House of Delegates February 12th, 2025. Upon their arrival and tour, they were in the gallery and we actually brought this up and it was passed. Whereas, the Newport News Public School Youth Development promotes student success both in and out of the classroom and works with local stakeholders to build quality programs that enhance the overall well-being of all students in the school division. Whereas, the Newport News Public School Youth Development strives to create positive experiences, supportive environments, to ensure that every student feels seen, heard, understood, and valued. Whereas, international protocol and presocial approaches, Newport News Public School Youth Development Program helps young people engage in their peers, school, communities, and construct, and constructive ways that promotes positive outcomes for all who are involved. Newport News Public School Youth Development emphasizes that student empowerment and leadership, inclusivity, positive school culture, mentoring while teaching essential social, emotional skills. The Newport News Public School Youth Development encourages every student in the division to participate in at least nearly 1,000 student organizations, sports teams, and other enrichment opportunities, and we saw some here earlier today with the archery program. And the opportunities operate across the school division, creating positive norms, expectations, perspectives, and physically, emotional, safe environments, and the Newport News Public School Youth Development Program helps students build healthy relationships and develop a sense of belonging within a wider community. The Newport News Public School Youth Development has also designed and implemented innovative violence prevention initiatives that emphasize empowering service, learning, and emotional health. The Newport News Public School Youth Development has a unique infrastructure dedicated to school-based teams that increase the school's division's ability to implement evidence-based programming at every school for nearly the 26,000 students, 26,000 students here in Newport News in grades pre-K through 12. Newport News Public School Youth Development ensures that students have access to these critical programs regardless of their background. Whereas, the Newport News Public Schools Youth Development was recognized with the 2024 Silver Magma Award National School Board Association, which featured the division's accomplishments in the April 24 edition of the American School Board Journal. Therefore, be it resolved by the House of Delegates, the Senate concurring, that the General Assembly do hereby commend the Newport News Public School Youth Development for its work to give students the tools and support they need to succeed in the classroom and become leaders throughout the community. Be it further resolved, that a copy of this resolution was prepared by the clerk for presentation at the Newport News Public School Board Meeting, the General Assemblies, and also to show the General Assemblies admiration for this vital mission and contributions to the citizens of Newport News, House patrons Green and Price, Senate patron Diggs. And at this time... Madam Chair, I'd like to present you this proclamation. And I tried to keep it to three minutes.
Thank you so much. You're always welcome. So, we also have another council member with her, with us. Take a picture, sure. We also have another city council member with us. It's really a homecoming from him, for him, because this is, this is his first public service home, so Mr. John Ely is here this evening. Welcome home, John. All right. Moving on with our speakers for the evening, Reverend Natalie Chamberlain.
Good evening. It is always an honor to speak before the school board. I'm Reverend Natalie Chamberlain, a member of a caring coalition of citizens concerned for LGBTQIA youth and especially the trans youth under your care. June is Pride Month. Pride isn't just a party. It's protest, a plea, and a promise. We show up and have been coming here for months to celebrate queer lives and in the hopes of protecting those lives that are at risk in this community. Our coalition, our allies, and we may fly our pride colors, but being ally means standing with those who are being harmed, and we are standing when it matters most. If you want to protect trans lives, you have the power to do so. We ask that you stand with, not against, your trans students. And I would like to add a comment about another topic tonight. I want to commend the bus drivers who have been coming here and speaking up as the pastor of a congregation with children in it. I am really concerned about the things I've been hearing, and I'm also concerned that the drivers that stand and speak up are not always treated well when they return to work the next day, so I would hope that you would look into retaliatory measures by their bosses.
Michelle Nordine. And after that, we'll have Kevin Pugh.
Good evening, Chairman Searl, Dr. Mitchell, and school board members. For those who haven't heard me speak before, my name is Michelle Nordine, and I am the Newport News Council PTA's President. I would like to give everyone a wrap-up of our PTAs in our school district. Last year, my secretary challenged our students to double our reflection entries to council. I would like to inform everyone that they did. Thirty reflection entries were sent to council, and for the first time, we had an entry in every category. After judging these entries, we sent 14 to Virginia PTA, and two entries received a award of excellence from Virginia PTA. One was in the film category from Woodside High School, and the other was in the visual arts category from Ella Fitzgerald Middle School. If any student is interested in working on an entry for the 2025-2026 Reflections, Reflections Contest, the theme is "I Belong." I ran two membership challenges this year. The first one is titled "Put the T in PTA." The first school at each level to reach 100% teacher membership by September 30th receives a traveling trophy to display in their main office. General Stanford won at the elementary level, and Huntington won at the middle school level. I am hoping to award a trophy at the high school level next year. The second challenge is a call of membership. This runs from July 1st to the end of February. The PTA in each division that has the most students represented by student population receives a monetary, monetary award from council. Hilton won for the second year in a row, and Huntington won for the second year in a row at the middle school level. This year, Woodside High School PTSA ran away with this challenge. They had 27.8% of their students represented. The next closest school only had 8% of their students represented. This leads me to more... This leads me to more accolades for Woodside High School PTSA. Over the weekend, I attended Virginia PTA's Legacy and Impact Awards Dinner and Annual Meeting. Woodside PTSA received a certificate and a trophy for having the most PTSA student members statewide. Virginia PTA wanted to know Woodside PTSA's secret. The answer, type PTSA membership into your homecoming ticket to have students show school spirit and join the movement. Way to go, Woodside PTSA, go Wolverines. Council also awarded two scholarships this year, one to a student from Menchville and another to a student from Woodside. We awarded six Volunteer of the Year awards and submitted five of them to Virginia PTA. Dr. Van Dyke from Sanford Elementary was nominated for Virginia PTA's Power Principal, and he won at the elementary level. This award recognizes principals at the elementary and secondary levels who have demonstrated that strong family-school partnerships are the key to student success. One last thing for families to think about over the summer. Last week, new legislation was passed regarding SOLs that will take effect for the twenty-twenty-six, twenty-twenty-seven school year. This law will make a student's SOL score account for ten percent of a student's final grade. I would like everyone to research what this new law is and how it will affect students, not only in our district, but statewide. I would like to host town halls in the fall to make sure our voices are heard at the General Assembly in January. I would like to thank everyone who supported PTSA's mission to make every child's potential a reality by engaging and empowering families and communities to advocate for all children by joining a Newport News PTA, you helped set a new PTA membership record for Newport News. We currently have three thousand three hundred and sixty-nine PTA members in the Newport News. I look forward to working with everyone next school year, thank you, and I'm sorry I ran over.
On behalf of the board and the division, I want to thank you for all your hard work that you have done. This is, you know, this is starting to be a trend now, last year you kicked it off, and continuing this year. And if I'm not mistaken, you recently received an accolade?
Yes, I did.
Yes, would you share?
Virginia PTA runs volunteer of the year programs at each division, elementary, middle, high, and council. And I won, I was nominated for the council level, and I forwarded it to Virginia PTA, and they awarded me Virginia Volunteer of the Year at the council level.
Kevin Pugh?
Good evening, good evening, everybody. Proper protocol already being established, we bring greetings from Kevin's World. Personally, me, I'm a Chicago boy, born and raised, I did fourteen in the military, Navy, and that's what got me out here. I'm thirteen years in at Newport News Ship Building, building the ships that I served on. I have my son here, he's the CEO of Kevin's World. Kevin, he started YouTube when he was five years old. That was in twenty-eighteen. What we have, we have books, he does performances, and it's a pre-K through five event that I would like to keep going, I don't want to go past pre-K through five. So, we got one of the books out the series, the series is The Adventures of Kevin's World. And it's gonna be a ten-book series, and the first one is No Bullies. It's a father-and-son experience, me teaching my son how to deal with bullies, because I know this is a big thing going on around here, and what better way than to hear it from one of their peers? Second book, Chores. Instead of him asking me for money all the time, you know, I teach him how to, you know, get the money. And the third book is Competition, you know, and so on and so on, and then our goal is to make a cartoon out of every book. But right now, short-term goals, I would like these books to be in the public libraries and also the school libraries. That's my goal right now. We done book reads in Hampton, First Baptist Church, Burbank Elementary School, Newport News, Paperback Inks, they gave us the opportunity to do a book read and to sell our books with Dr. Best, and she was there. If you check our website, www.kevinsworld.com, now you can see her, and Mr. Jones, he stepped out in our photo gallery. And I would like to thank you for your time.
Thank you. Reverend Michael Burnett, and after that, Jackie Batterson.
Good evening, members of the board, sorry I missed you the last couple of months, I've been a little busy, but we've gotten familiar with one another over the last, I think by my count, it's eighteen or nineteen months, that at least I've been showing up with a couple holes here and there to advocate for the well-being of our LGBTQ students, and specifically the T, specifically our trans students, ever since the implementation of Procedure JBP, which in part prohibits an educator from using a trans student's preferred name or pronouns. I think the pendulum swung a little far, we went from requiring it to prohibiting it. And in so doing, we removed what could be a massive pillar of support for our trans students. As we have said, as we have shown via statistics from multiple sources over this last year and a half, this statistically significantly increases the chance of a mental health crisis for one of these students, and potential for self-harm and even suicide. Now, I'm very glad that nothing has happened so far, at least that I know of, at least that I've heard of, and now, I don't suspect we would probably here. If something happened to a minor, I would hope that that information wouldn't leak to the public. And I hope very much that it is true, that we've had no crises among your trans students, which might number somewhere in the, oh, close to a hundred or more students out of the massive number of students you have, just based on national averages. I pray that it continues to be the case, that no one is hurting themselves. I also really, really hope, and I earnestly pray, that no one's being hurt at home. Because unfortunately, so often, as is the case for LGBTQ youth, home isn't always a happy place. Well, anyway. Of course, you can fix this. We have offered proposals, several of them, we don't have to go all the way back to the Northam Policies. There is a wonderful way to sort of split the difference here and take out the most damaging parts of these policies that remove this pillar of support that can be so crucial to these students. And I really hope that you take those proposals seriously, because as the statistics we've offered you over this last year and a half show, the longer we let this go on, at a certain point, folks, we're playing the odds. And if we're here for our students, as our rather loose coalition of folks has been here from the get-go, not to promote an ideology, but to protect the lives of vulnerable students. And I hope that's what you want to do too, right? If we want to do that, there's a very easy way to do so, without having to make a huge, sweeping political move. Thank you.
Jackie Batterson?
Members of the school board, my name is Jackie Batterson, and I am a resident of Newport News. In paraphrasing Lyndon Johnson, I speak tonight for the dignity of man and the destiny of democracy. On May seventeenth, nineteen fifty-seven, the Reverend Martin Luther King said, "Give us the ballot, and we will no longer have to worry the federal government about our basic rights." Unfortunately, he did not foresee a federal government who would again gleefully deny citizens of their rights under the Constitution. Today, it is another struggle to keep this government from again taking voting rights away from citizens, denying immigrants who are here to make a better life for their families, but instead are illegally kidnapped and sent to a foreign country, denying women the right to make their own health decisions and to do everything in their power to refuse to allow the gay and transgender communities to live without constant fear of reprisal from a government that should protect them. This is the government that sends out masked thugs to attack innocent people just trying to live their lives, breaking up families, and leaving innocent children without the protection of their parents. I have been asking you to change your procedures regarding the transgender children in this school system. Procedures that reflect the dehumanizing dictates of the state and federal government. Procedures which deny simply acknowledging and respecting their chosen names and pronouns. However, you continue to follow these dictates that would seek to eliminate any visibility of our transgender neighbors and friends. I will close this evening with a quote from Thomas Aquinas, priest and philosopher. "He who is not angry when there is just cause for anger is immoral." Why? Because anger looks to the good of justice. And if you can live amid injustice without anger, you are immoral as well as unjust. Thank you for your time.
I believe that our councilman would like to share a few words with us, so, Mr. Ely.
Good evening, everyone. I wrote a letter to send to y'all, but I never sent it, so I just came here to read it. I would like to take a moment to formally recognize an outstanding individual who is making a remarkable impact within the Newport News Public Schools' community and facilitator at Midtown Community Center. Desiree Chrislaw is a school bus driver who recently relocated from Suffolk and currently serves students at Saunders Elementary, Achievable Dream Academy, and Passage Middle School. I had the pleasure of meeting Desiree during a recent Uber ride, and in just a short time, it became abundantly clear that she is much more than a transportation professional. She is a passionate advocate for students and a true ambassador for the school division. Her enthusiasm and deep commitment to her work went not only evident, but also truly inspiring. Desiree spoke with great pride and affection about the schools she served and the students she transport each day. Her positivity, energy, and love for her role reflect the very best of what educational leadership and service should look like. She's a shining example of how every role model within the school division, whether in classroom, behind the scenes, or on the road, can contribute to culture of excellence and care. I want to extend my heartfelt thanks to Newport News Public School System and Newport News Parks Recreation for continuing to nature, support individuals like Desiree. Her dedication and spirit and testament of strength and quality of the district's team, and I believe she deserves formal acknowledgement for this exceptional service. So I was getting, I let my cousin use my car, and it didn't go too well. So I had to rental car. And Desiree was my Uber driver to hers. She didn't know who I was, but she spoke about twenty minutes on how well and how loved she worked for Newport News Public School System, and how she wouldn't change her job in a while. She spoke so good about this division, and how excited she was to work for her, I tipped her a hundred dollars. She stated that, you know, she's a mother of five, she drives school bus, she Uber driver, she worked for the city Parks Recreation, and how she just loves serving Newport News. So I just wanted to make sure I let y'all know the great works and how she's spreading the gospel about Newport News Public School System.
Next, we'll have Joyce Flo, and then Yvonne Bate.
Good evening. I'm back again, I am a bus driver, I've been driving for twenty years. My question would be, do you really care about your employees? At this point, now we have parents coming to the buses, wanting to assault the drivers, cursing them out, and it's no accountability for the parents when they do this. Or better yet, they'll tell them, just don't go to the bus stop. You can keep coming to the school, it's okay that you cuss the bus driver out, but just don't come to the bus stop. It seems that the students and the parents are running the schools, because they definitely are being pacified by the school. The administrators have no possible indication what discipline is, because ISS to the kids, that's a party, that's not discipline to them. They love going to ISS. Bus driver shortage is getting worse and worse and worse, partly because of the bad behavior of the kids and the lack of respect from higher up. Drivers and assistants are being verbally, mentally, and some even physically abused on a daily basis by the students, called out their name, cussed up and down, and we supposed to just transport them like everything is good, as gravy. Attendance is priority over medical issues. There is no seniority, which is so disrespectful to seasoned drivers that have been there for twenty to thirty years. And what I mean by that is, if a driver comes in and hasn't missed no time after being there for three months, they get a new bus, but a driver that's been there for twenty-five years, because they missed time because they got sick, you don't get a new bus. Confidentiality, what is that? Everybody know your business once you go talk to a supervisor. And if you speak up against anything that you see as wrong, or speak up for yourself, you definitely, you're gonna be retaliated against, for sure, definitely, you're gonna be retaliated against. Rules should be put in place for everyone, not limited to certain people, and we're definitely losing drivers to other school systems. And in closing, I would like to say, I've been there for twenty years. I should not be in a race or competing against somebody to get a new bus.
Yvonne Bate?
Thank you, school board members, for having me. I'm back as well, and to pick it back off what she was saying, it's true. To be in the union is like having a target on your back. They do stuff low-key, so you don't see it out, you know, outly that you are being retaliated against. As far as me, I was a bus driver for twenty-plus years, and I started to have panic attacks, which is a disability. I got money cut from my check, five dollars is taken from me, which over time, that's twenty, that's twenty-four thousand dollars in the last four years. I'm supposed to just take that, you know, just take it and just deal with it. Okay, I get paid once a month, I do my job, I do it the best of my ability, but now I'm dealing with disability because of the panic attacks. And so, when I took, when I asked about it, they said it's a policy, but I have not seen a policy. This is my third time coming before the board, you are supposed to help us. If I come to you like a big brother's supposed to, we're not getting anything behind it. There's other drivers who's no, same thing, they could not drive because of diabetes, they can't drive because it's out of order. So with me, it was panic attacks. So it took five dollars from me, two dollars from somebody else who just came on board, thirteen dollars from somebody else, seven dollars from somebody else. If it's a policy, show me the policy, and I'll go and sit down. There is no policy, so if there's no policy, that means it's a deterrent. So if it's a deterrent, that means it's workforce, what do you call it? Oh, man. When you come at your drivers low-key, I can't think of the word right now, but it's a punishment, you know, because if I stand up for myself, I'm one of those ones, if something don't sound right, I raise my hand, and I get penalized for raising my hand. I would ask each one of y'all to come to sit on the buses, just dress down, and come and sit on some of these buses. You got drivers leaving in the droves, it's not a hard job, it's what we gotta go through. I'm an assistant, I was, first I was getting cussed at, now I'm getting bit. And I guess if I said, well, that's part of your job, no, not every day. Bit, hair pull, cussed out, every day, but I come to do my job, and I got five dollars taken from my pay, twenty-four thousand dollars less. And I'm not the only one, I'm speaking for everybody that cannot drive. And I'm not the only one. I'm speaking for everybody that cannot drive. Life be happening to these drivers. You come and you, you, you full of life when you first start, but this job beats you down. And then when you say I can't do it no more, it's, oh, we ain't got time for you no more. That's to get rid of them, shut them down. And I'm telling you, you're not going to have any drivers. If transportation, it's like the left hand don't know what the right hand is doing. And no disrespect, you are the left hand and they're the right hand. No one's on the same page and drivers are tired and you're going to keep losing drivers. Thank you.
Next we'll have Eric Burton and then Dr. James Graves.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. I didn't come up here with no prepared speech, but I wanted to make y'all well aware of a issue that's going on across our entire school board involving the employees. The medical insurance was changed this year involving the prescription insurance. It has caused a lot of employees to have to go through the, uh, pre-approval process again, getting a lot of medications denied, having to get them changed, employees having to go on FMLA because they can't get their medications. And employees that had great attendance are now having attendance issues because of this change that we've gone and made. What I'm asking is if we can please try to look at returning back to the previous medical coverage we had involving our medications. I have spoken to teachers, I've spoken to janitors, and it is affecting people across the board throughout the whole district. Also, piggybacking on the way it was told by the other drivers as far as the bus situation goes, I can personally say that I have been told, because I come here and speak in front of y'all, that I have been passed up on possible promotions that I've interviewed for because I come here. I have personally been told that I could progress further inside transportation if I would just keep my mouth shut. Also, at the lot that I drive out of, I am the only key driver that does not have air conditioning because I speak up for the union. I drive the only diesel bus out of all the key drivers. There's key drivers that have been here less time than I have that have gotten before I have. Due to that, I have had an incident recently where I had to go to the hospital because of a heat exhaustion. Because of how hot it's got on that bus. But I still come here every day because I come here for the children. I come here to get them to and from school. I know that they have S Ls this week and I want to make sure they can get to school. And every single one of us that are out is another child that's late for school because there's not enough of us. Thank you for y'all's time. Y'all have a great day.
Good evening. As you've had, thank you. If you have heard already, a lot of folks have talked about their disgusted situations at their job. Let's think for a minute. These are human beings that work for you. That's going up against a lot of negative situations. They have come up here month after month and have talked to you. I get the same complaints. I get phone calls at ten o'clock, eleven o'clock at night, bus drivers crying, cafeteria workers crying. Think of everyone here as human. They work for you. When we gonna start thinking about that? When are we gonna start listening to what the bus drivers, not only them, the teachers, cafeteria workers, all our ESP folks that make our school system run? Because before they come to us as teachers, they come to those bus drivers to get on that bus and come to school. And those buses must be safe for every bus driver. Parents should not be cussing them out and don't have no consequences. Students should not be cussing teachers out and don't get ISS and don't get anything. Nothing. These are the phone calls that I get. And I encourage the bus drivers to come up here. Tell them your story. And once they tell their story, they get retaliated, in their opinion, they get retaliated against and it's wrong. It's unfair. It's favoritism for what they're saying. They have proof of it and they want to speak to the superintendent. So that she can get that information if it's not getting to her. It has to stop. I talked to several bus drivers and they said, I'm leaving because I'd rather choose peace over pay. Peace over pay. They're human beings, ladies and gentlemen. Let's fix it together. One idea I have is for y'all to have town hall meetings. Go to their work sites, res, sit down with them, talk to them. Final, get your own answers for yourself. Don't depend on the directors and everybody. Get your own answers for yourself and see what's going on. It's not going to change, ladies and gentlemen, until we get something going in the right direction. Hoodies, please make a policy, these hoodies be gone on these kids' heads. We are sick and tired of telling kids to take off their hoodies and there's no consequences. They just walk down the hall like we ain't said a thing. Teachers need help. Administrators need help. They need leadership, they need guidance, and y'all are the ones that can do it. Thank you very much.
Our last two speakers, Mary Voss and Gabriel Marquez.
Hello, uh, Mary Voss, N N P S teacher, parent, and graduate. Contract negotiations, also known as collective bargaining rights, would give N N P S teachers and staff a seat at the table to negotiate for stronger contracts. Districts with contract negotiations have achieved improved working conditions that benefit both students and school workers, such as smaller class sizes, more planning time, increased health, health and safety measures, the purchase of necessary equipment, and more. The Commonwealth Institute for Fiscal Analysis, a respected Virginia think tank dedicated to economic and social justice, calls collective bargaining a critical tool to improve school staffing, pay, and morale. Here are some excerpts from their report. "The ability to collectively bargain can improve working conditions for school staff, which helps boost teacher job satisfaction and morale as well as student outcomes. Schools with collective bargaining rights for teachers have lower teacher turnover. A study from the American Federation of Teachers found that schools with collective bargaining have lower teacher transfer out rates than schools without collective bargaining. Collective bargaining benefits students and communities as a whole by boosting teacher pay, improving working conditions, reducing turnover, and increasing school workers' voice on the job. When N N P S becomes the first school district on the peninsula to approve collective bargaining for teachers and staff, watch how well-qualified school workers flock to our city to live and work and raise families." Now, turning to the recommended, uh, one thousand dollar bonuses for state workers from the Virginia General Assembly's budget. Um, thank you to Dr. Mitchell for announcing that the district is seeking a solution um, that could allow all of our hard-working N N P S staff and teachers to receive the one K bonus. Um, this would also help retain teachers and staff. Um, signing bonuses are quite common in N N P S, but these retention bonuses are best because they reward the employees that you already have working hard in the trenches and encourage us to continue. In our recent N E A budget survey with over three hundred responses, ninety-four percent of respondents said that they strongly support one thousand dollar bonuses for staff and teachers. Finally, in the current political climate, it is more important than ever that N N P S leaders aim to respect and protect vulnerable students as much as possible. This includes gay, gender non-conforming, and trans students as well as immigrant students. Please stand up for these vulnerable children and teens by striving for the most respectful and non-discriminatory policies possible, uh, such as the changes to policies for LGBTQ plus students, uh, recommended by other speakers tonight. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Last we'll have Gabriel Marquez.
Uh, yes, good evening, everyone. Good evening to the board and good evening to the chair of the board, the Honorable Ms. Searl Slaw. My name is Gabriel Marquez. So I'm sure you all know me by now. Been coming here for a few months, missed last month though. Uh, I'm coming to speak on behalf of the, uh, Tidewater chapter of the DSA, of which I am a co-chair. I'm here to speak on issues of human, human and worker rights. Uh, the conditions I've heard tonight that the bus drivers face, um, are intolerable, for lack of a better word. Um, so I would like to see immediate action on that. I will be letting the rest of the community know about, uh, what they're having to be forced to endure. I'm also here to speak and say, uh, please listen to the teachers and the staff on the issue of collective bargaining. Uh, they perform one of the most important jobs that I can think of in our community, uh, raising the next generation of leaders. Um, they deserve a fair wage, like all workers do. All workers deserve it. Um, workers are entitled to the fruits of their labor, in my opinion. And, uh, finally, I'd like to ask that the board, please seriously take the, um, take seriously the issue of trans rights in our schools. Um, these are some of the most vulnerable people in our society. And if we cannot protect them, we cannot protect anybody else. We can't protect immigrants. We can't protect black people. We can't protect anyone. And in this environment, we're seeing loss of rights, we're seeing a lot, a lot of liberties. This is extremely important. We have to do something. Thank you.
I want to thank everyone for your comments and thoughts this evening. We will now move on to section three, the consent agenda, which includes three point zero one minutes from the work session, April twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-five. Three point zero two minutes from the closed meeting, April twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-five. Three point zero three minutes from the regular meeting, April twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-five. Three point zero four, financial reports, including the revenue and expense reports for April twenty twenty-five and child nutrition reports for April twenty twenty-five. Three point zero five, the personnel report. Three point zero six, the budget transfer. At this time, can we have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Madam Chair, I move that we approve the consent agenda as presented.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Alger. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Alger.
Four.
Amy.
Four.
Beth.
Four.
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 Searl Slaw?
Four.
Motion passes seven zero.
Thank you. We'll move on to section five, reports and information. We have five point zero one, federal funding applications. Dr. Mitchell, who do we have with us?
Good evening. Thank you so much, Madam Chair. This evening we have with us Ms. Letha Brooks. She is the supervisor for federal programs. She will be coming to you to share the proposed spending plan for the annual federal funds that we receive. We also have sitting in the audience, Ms. Verinda Robinson, who is the program administrator for federal programs.
Good evening, Chairman Searl Slaw, Vice Chair Beth, Dr. Mitchell, and school board members. On behalf of the federal programs team, we truly appreciate the opportunity to support the division's strategic agenda through the federal funds allocated to Newport News Public Schools. In this presentation, I will share the purpose and use of the formula, the federal formula grants titles one A, one D, two A, three A, and four A as defined by the Elementary Secondary Education Act, or E S E A. The federal programs team writes, manages, and monitors grants that support services for all students and staff as well as complements the evidence-based interventions and programs currently in use. The federal funding allocated for the twenty-five, twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six school year is approximately seventeen million dollars, which includes approximately fourteen point one million for Title One, one point six million for Title Two, two hundred forty-five thousand for Title Three, and just under nine hundred twenty-two thousand for Title Four. Each year, before finalizing all grants, the federal programs team hosts a forum where stakeholders are invited to participate in a needs assessment to discuss goals and allocations. An objective of this meeting is to ensure all funds are used effectively while ensuring there is no duplication of services across the district. The purpose of Title One Part A is to improve basic programs by providing opportunities to improve academic achievement in schools with the highest percentage of students from low socioeconomic families and to ensure all children meet challenging state academic content and achievement standards. These funds are largely allocated to personnel for instructional support positions as well as other grant-related expenses such as assessment, contract services, materials, supplies, and indirect costs. Title One personnel serve over ten thousand students across twenty schools. Positions include pre-K staff, family and community engagement specialists, reading and instructional specialists, interventionists, vows tutors, paraprofessionals, and technology support. The twenty Title One schools include three pre-K centers, fourteen elementary schools, two middle schools, and one high school. Title One schools are identified using two criteria. Any schools where at least seventy-five percent of the students are from low socioeconomic families must be identified as a Title One school under E S E A. In Newport News, schools are then selected per grade bands in comparison to the district socioeconomic average. Elementary schools are identified first to ensure comprehensive supports and interventions are provided at this foundational level. The purpose of Title Two Part A funding is to improve the quality of teaching and leadership through recruitment and professional development. This grant provides supplemental funding to support the preparation, training, recruitment, retention, and professional growth of teachers and school leaders of grades K through twelve. These funds support staff and students by providing division-level instructional coaches and specialists to assist teachers in providing effective strategies, routines, and best practices for all core content. Additionally, Newport News students who attend private area private schools are supported through private school set aside funds, which are used to enhance the private schools' academic programs. This grant also includes grant-related expenses. Title Three Part A supports language instruction for English learners and immigrant youth. Funding is used to address English language proficiency and academic achievement as well as personnel, English language development materials, and professional development. The Title Two Four Part A is the Student Support Academic Enrichment Program. This grant is intended to improve students' academic achievement by providing access to a well-rounded education, support safe and healthy school conditions, and enhance the use of technologies to improve the academic achievement and digital literacy of all students. Title Four also includes private school set aside funds to support student needs. The Title One Part D is a sub-grant of the Title One Part A. This grant, which is written and managed in the federal programs office, supports the Newport News Behavioral Health Center and is used to improve education for students who are considered neglected, delinquent, or at risk of dropping out of school. The allocation is just over eighty-one thousand five hundred. Our next step is to seek board approval of our grant proposals by June seventeenth, so we may submit our applications to V D O E by July first. This will ensure we are able to continue instructional programs, supports, and interventions for all Newport News students and staff. Thank you so much for allowing time to share this evening, and if you have any questions, I'll take them at this time.
Board members, do we have questions at this time?
Um, just one question I have. Uh, in terms of like, for example, the funding for the, um, Behavioral Health Center, or does that apply across the city or just the schools that qualify for Title One?
Title One Part D for the behavioral.
Uh, right.
Yes, that's specific to the Behavioral Health Center in Newport News.
Okay, but that, that service is provided to all students across the city regardless of which school?
Out of the Title One grant, we do have services for our students that are in the school district, yes.
Okay, okay.
But your, your question is, can students from across the entire district take advantage of the services at the Behavioral Health?
Right, that may not be in a.
That may not be in a Title One school, and the answer is yes, if they qualify. You know, you, you have to meet the behavioral, you know, standard, so to speak, or criteria, so the answer is yes.
Okay. And have we, uh, expanded the number of schools that qualify for Title, um, for Title Grants?
Yes, we have twenty schools this year.
Okay.
And we did add a high school this year.
Okay, great. Are we making, so that's for the upcoming year, that was expanded?
Correct.
Great, thank you.
Any other questions, board members? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We'll continue in section five, reports and. We'll continue in section five, reports and information. Five point zero two, biennial division literacy plan for twenty twenty five to twenty twenty seven.
We have moving this, this way, Ms. Lori Wall, Director of Elementary Teaching and Learning. And as you know, Ms. Wall has been before you on multiple occasions to talk about the division literacy plan, so she is here tonight to provide an update.
Good evening, Chairman Sorel Sloss, Vice Chairman Dr. Beth, members of the board, and Dr. Mitchell. I'm here this evening to share our division's biennial literacy plan as required by the Virginia Literacy Act. Last spring, when I brought forward the literacy plan for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year, I shared an overview of the six sections the plan must encompass and the required format for all divisions. The plan being brought forth this evening follows the same format and reflects the additional requirements of grades six through eight that will begin in the twenty-five, twenty-six school year. On this slide is our division's English vision that we crafted last fall to reflect our continued commitment to ensuring students are college, career, and citizen-ready, and are aimed to do this through the use of high-quality instructional materials and evidence-based practices. We will continue to communicate our vision with internal and external stakeholders through multiple avenues such as professional development opportunities during pre-service training for teachers, and our leadership conference for administrators and central office staff. In addition, division communication will be shared with families throughout the school year through division literature, our website, and division and school-based events. The second section of the plan details the high-quality core supplemental and intervention materials selected by the division from the Virginia Board of Education's approved list. Legislation set forth in the Virginia Literacy Act requires local school divisions to adopt core curriculum from the VDOE board-approved list for grades K through five. Our locally-developed English curriculum will continue to be implemented in grades six through eight. Therefore, in this section, it has been updated to reflect the supplemental and intervention resources from the approved VDOE list being implemented in grades six through eight. Nuzella as the supplemental resource and Read One Eighty as the intervention resource. They are now incorporated to support instruction and facilitate student learning. The third section outlines the evidence-based reading research training that will be employed within the division. During the twenty-four, twenty-five school year, all teachers, reading specialists, and administrators were required to complete a comprehensive VDOE-approved training. This slide represents the continuation of this required training for any new teachers, reading specialists, and administrators to deepen their knowledge of evidence-based practices and the science of reading. In addition to this training, all staff will engage in professional learning opportunities and/or job-embedded coaching to develop their knowledge and practice of the selected supplemental and intervention resources and core materials in elementary. The fourth section details the student assessments, screeners, and diagnostic tools that will be utilized within the division. This year marked the initial year of implementation of the new K-three screening tool, the Virginia Language and Literacy Screener, or VOWs. In the twenty-five, twenty-six school year, the implementation of the Virginia Language and Literacy Screener in grades four through eight will begin. Only students who meet the criteria, which is still being determined by the VDOE, will be administered the assessment. As with the K-three screener, an individualized, individualized student reading plan will be created for identified students in grades four through eight to address specific areas to be strengthened through intervention instruction. In addition to these screeners, we will monitor and respond to student performance through the use of local assessments, state growth assessments in grades three through five, measures of academic progress, or the MAP assessment in grades six through eight, and supplemental and intervention data for students receiving additional support. The fifth section of the plan specifies the resources the divisions will utilize to monitor the literacy progress of their implementation. Our plan outlines that we will monitor the written, taught, and tested curriculum through the implementation of classroom walkthroughs, lesson feedback, and school and district data meetings. And the final section of the plan requires divisions to describe how they will involve parents, caregivers, and the community. Our plan indicates that we will expand our communication and partnership with families on the implementation of student reading plans in grades four through eight. The plan includes recommended resources that families can use to support their child's literacy development. In addition, we will continue to partner with our family and community engagement team to develop and host both school-based and district literacy events for families that involve our community partners. And finally, English curriculum storyboards will be shared with families to provide them with an overview of what their child will be learning in their specific grade during this school year. The plan must be approved by the local school, school board before submission to the VDOE by June thirtieth. Therefore, the next step is to seek board approval at the June meeting, so we can submit our plan before the June thirtieth due date. At this time, I'm happy to take any questions if you have any at this time.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Very thorough presentation. Any questions from board members at this time? I know that once you review, after having seen the presentation, we may, may have a few. Thank you.
I just had a quick question, um, because I may have misheard. Did you say that students only take the VOWs if they're ready to take the VOWs?
In grades four through eight, in the twenty-five, twenty-six school year. In grades four through eight, it will be based on an identified criteria that the VDOE will determine. It's not, not been determined yet, so it is for a specific group of students based on the identified criteria.
Under section six, um, student, can you tell us a little bit about, more about the student reading plan?
Sure.
Yeah, under, under the student reading plan.
So in grades K through three currently, a student who um is in the high-risk ban after taking the VOWs assessment, and a student reading plan is developed that outlines what is the intervention they're receiving and the goals. Um and it's folded into our student success process, um, which we already had in place. So the VDOE just has a set student plan that we have to have, uh, the components to. Our division already had a student support team in place. That will happen then in grades four through eight next year. For those students that meet the criteria to have the VOWs assessment administered, they also then will have a student reading plan that outlines what is the intervention that they will have to support and strengthen those areas identified on, on the screener.
And will there be a component for parents to do as well in this, in the reading plan?
There is actually, the VDOE, as part of that plan, has a section where we um link it back to here are resources that support a family for the goals for their child. So that's on every individual plan. Um, the four through eight plan has not been released from the VDOE yet. We will certainly look at parent involvement um with that student reading plan regardless if there's a section on the four through eight plan.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Oh, Mr. Brown?
Yes, I have a question in regards, going to stay with, staying with the VOWs assessment.
Sure.
Um, what is the purpose behind filtering the students who are taking the VOWs assessment? In other words, why don't all the students take the VOWs, VOWs assessment? And then if I'm a parent and I want my child to have the VOWs assessment, so I can, in essence, see where they are, is that something I can request? Um, if you could speak to those.
So in K through three, we screen all children as a um screener for K-two and then identify students in third grade, and that's to determine, do you have um reading difficulties that we need to close gaps early, for early intervention? When the VDOE is bringing in a four through eight screener, the criteria that's already established by the, by the VDOE will say, we've already identified that you're, you're well past K through three. And so we've identified through whatever criteria they come up with, that if you meet that criteria, that screener will be able to pinpoint what are the areas that are holding you back from being able to, to move into grade-level material. You, if you don't meet that screening criteria, you don't show that you need to have a diagnostic to diagnose that you have areas that we need to close, because you're, you're already meeting those benchmarks. So the reason in four through eight, you don't give it to everyone, is because not everyone is showing they have those gaps to close.
So is there another assessment that everyone gets to?
Yeah, that's the MAP assessment. So in grades fourth and sixth through eight, they would get the MAP assessment. In grades uh three through five, they would get the Virginia Growth Assessment. So we do an all, and then we do the part based off of what you did on your overall diagnostic, yes.
Douglas, you had a question, I'm sorry, Mr. Brown. You had a question that was if a parent wants to have their child take.
Yes, I'm sorry.
Right, so in essence, if a parent says, well, I still feel that my child may be struggling, and I want them assessed anyway.
Yes, could we give the VOWs assessment to that child? Of course. So if it was a parent recommendation, they would, they would say, even though they don't meet the criteria, can we give the assessment and give them the results? We could, yes.
Yes, um, I, I went through the literacy plan and, and thank you so much for all the work um behind the scenes, because I know it's, there's a sense of urgency with, with everything. Um, just a couple of questions, uh, does every school have a reading specialist? And are they responsible for coaching, and also do they do the interventions as well? I'm just, yeah.
So um, VDOE, it's one to five hundred and fifty students for grades K through five. It's one to one thousand students in grades um four through eight. However, we have allocated um a reading specialist position at every elementary school. Um, so we're in the hiring process now for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year to have um those filled for the, for the um twenty-five, twenty-six school year, so yes. Second question, coaching?
Do they do the coaching?
And, yes.
Intervention?
So it will depend on the need of the school, how much coaching and how much student support, um, because we have other uh positions that are fully invested in intervention support, that they are trained to do that. Reading specialist is one of them, so they divide their time based on the need of their school.
Okay.
But they are trained in both.
Okay. And in terms of training, so one of the things, when I was reading it, I, I know that the teachers, uh, administrators are getting trained. Are we including uh long-term subs as well as uh instructional aides or uh?
Yes, so.
Teacher assistants, right.
The um VOWs training, that, I mean, the uh VDOE training is a year-long training that um certified teachers uh go through. Those that are associates are working towards their associate, those that are associates are working to be certified teachers. So once they are certified teachers, they then will take that VDOE training. However, they are included in all of our school-based and district-based training around our core supplemental and intervention. So they are learning about the science of reading, they are learning about how to use the materials, and then, and they're learning how to give the assessments through, through our support. Once they're certified teachers, they will take the training that the VDOE recommends.
Okay. And the last thing was just, uh, uh, just two suggestions that I had. One, in terms of um section five, I think it would be a good idea um to have possibly the uh principal and teachers uh surveyed as far as feedback um, uh, with respect to support. And I think that that would be a, uh, good information for, for us as a board, um, especially during the budget process. If we need more support, we can certain, certainly talk about allocating funding and, and things of that nature. And section six, I'd like to somehow tie in university partners too, and put that in the application if possible, uh, because they're, you know, they're, they could certainly provide us a lot of support as well.
Yes.
Um, and I don't mean university partners as tutors, I'm talking about, uh.
Actual universities, CNU, William &amp; Mary, yes, yes, uh, and UVA, and we are partnering, um.
And I'd like to see that recognized in the documents, absolutely, because, right, it's all hands on deck.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, are we good? Thank you so much, we appreciate you. Last, we'll move on to section five, reports and information. Five point zero three, summer learning opportunities. Dr. Mitchell, we've been waiting for this one.
Yes, they have, Dr. Rogers.
Hi, Dr. Rogers.
Dr. Rogers is here to share with you uh some of our plans for summer learning opportunities for our students.
Thank you, Dr. Mitchell. Good evening, Madam Chair Sorel Sloss, Vice Chair Dr. Beth, Dr. Mitchell, members of the school board. This evening, I'm here to present an update on our summer learning opportunities for two thousand twenty-five. Tonight's presentation will provide a very high-level overview of what our plans are, as well as focusing on how Elevate, which is what we call our summer learning opportunities, how that will address the current needs of our students, as well as set the stage for revitalized summer learning experience in our division. This summer, Newport News Public Schools will offer a variety of summer accelerated learning opportunities for our students. Elevate will provide remediation for identified students in grades pre-K through eight, while STEAM camps will provide enrichment opportunities for other selected students in current grades two through nine. Current eighth through eleventh grade students have both credit recovery, as well as credit advancement opportunities during two separate high school sessions. Those students are able to, to attend just one or both of those sessions. The slide in front of you shows where all programming begins and during the last week in June. And there are three elementary, three elementary Elevate sites, one middle school site, and one high school site. And elementary schools are Discovery STEM on DSA, Greenwood Elementary, and Sedgfield Elementary. Gilberts Lee Middle School will house our middle school students, and Woods High High School will house our high school programming. For our Elevate program, elementary, no, elementary and middle schools will run from June thirtieth through July twenty-four, while high schools will have both sessions, June twenty-third through July tenth, and resume the second session from July fourteen through July thirty-one. Elementary schools will all follow the same schedule, while middle school hours, hours will vary slightly. And high school hours are designed to accommodate different programs, including credit advancement, credit recovery, as well as the Summer Institute for the Arts. I want to talk a little bit about the elementary focus. So this summer, the elementary Elevate program would be centered again around camp-themed experiences while focusing on literacy, numeracy, as well as science. Science will be provided in the afternoon through enrichment provided by our community partners. And as noted previously, each elementary site will host a Family Day to showcase the exciting learning and activities that have taken place throughout the summer, which is in alignment with Component Six from, from the literacy program. Family Day is scheduled for July, July twenty-fourth, and we certainly invite you to participate in that. I have a video that I'll show with you momentarily that will share with all of our families who signed up or whose students were selected to participate in the program.
An exciting camp experience this summer. Welcome to Camp Elevate, a four-week adventure that brings the fun of the great outdoors into an engaging and empowering classroom experience, designed to develop confidence and independence in your young camper. Unlike other summer camps, this adventure has no outrageous price tag and is completely free for Newport News families. Transportation, breakfast, and lunch are provided at no additional cost. Get ready to read, sing, explore, and learn together. Daily adventures include exploring literacy, solving fun math challenges, and enjoying unique learning experiences with local businesses and community partners. Campers will be recognized for their leadership and social skills, all while making new friends, growing as lifelong learners, and celebrating with loved ones on the last day of camp during Family Day. So don't miss this amazing summer opportunity. Complete and return your child's Camp Elevate application today to enjoy this one-of-a-kind summer learning experience that will engage and inspire all learners.
All right, not all of our students participate in, are enrolled in Elevate. For those families who want their children to participate in, in something that's enriching for them, our team created a summer learning portal for students to participate in. It's a, um, a multi-week opportunity for students. I want to share a short video that better captures what it can do than I can share with you. uh, than I can share with you. So that's an opportunity for families to go, what, grade level up or grade level down at their own pace over eight weeks. And they can have content in English, excuse me, reading, math, or science. So it's a great opportunity for families when their children say that they're bored, to give them an opportunity to participate in. And something that will give them some support during the summer. As for our secondary opportunities, middle school program, it will have a focus on English and math remediation. Students will also be provided with enrichment opportunities in the afternoon through our community partners. High school students will have the opportunity to recover credit from classes that they were unsuccessful in during the school year. And additionally, we will offer credit advancement in health, one and two, driver's ed, outdoor ed, one and two, geometry, algebra, and economics, and personal finance. So how do we identify students for Elevate? Elementary and middle school students were selected for the Elevate program based on division-wide performance criteria in math and reading. And families were notified via their marking three report card. For high school students eligible for credit recovery, that's communicated with them through the marking period three report card again at the school year's end. Students are registered for credit courses through their school counseling office. The number of students registering for and attending will be shared at the conclusion of summer school when we usually come just at the end of summer or just at the beginning of the fall. Relative to some of our innovative summer learning opportunities, as part of our commitment to innovate summer learning, and we talked about that the summer before last, I'd like to share just an overview of our Elevate STEAM camps. This enrichment program provides rising third through tenth grade students with opportunities to apply STEM and STEAM skills through a project-based learning curriculum. Students have the opportunity to explore science, math, robotics, computer science, and the arts while supporting or learning about real-world problems. They also engage in hands-on challenges alongside mentors from colleges, universities, as well as industry partners. This summer, Ella Fitzgerald Middle School will serve as an NPS STEAM center. And we are planning to welcome six hundred fifty students in those programs. The camp does run through Monday through Thursday from July seventh through July twenty-fourth. The student hours are from nine-thirty AM until two-thirty PM. The experience wraps up with the family and community expo on July twenty-fourth, just as our other programs do. Each eligible, eligible student receives a personalized invitation and families will be notified of their acceptance by May thirtieth of this month. A lottery is used to, a lottery will be used if applications exceed available seats. So just a little bit about the programs that we're offering. This year's program also brings several exciting additions and recognitions that we're excited to highlight. This year, we've introduced four new camps that strengthen the A in STEAM, giving students the opportunities to explore theater, visual design, three D art, as well as music. And those are highlighted or bolded on the slide in front of you. Campus N, which is an aerospace-focused engineering camp for rising ninth and tenth grade students, is in partnership with the Virginia Space Flight Academy. Mariners Museum, excuse me, Mariners Adventure Camp returns this summer through our ongoing partnerships with Oldman University and is designed to build student interest in our new Maritime Engineering and Environmental Studies Academy, or otherwise known as MISA. To support these experiences, we've hired ten Newport News Public Schools career pathways mentors, as well as more than twenty William &amp; Mary pre-service teachers and STEM majors. Those will compete, complete coursework and field placements onsite at the STEAM center. We're also proud to share that this university-school collaboration earned Newport News Public Schools and William &amp; Mary the twenty-twenty-five Virginia School-University Partnership Project Award, recognizing our shared commitment to both student learning as well as teacher preparation through our innovative summer program. And at this time, I do have members of my team, and I want to recognize Mr. Anthony Tyler behind me, who serves as our director of, um, academic enrichment and intervention. It's a little bit in my mouthful, uh, about programming. He's absolutely spearheaded the programs for our summer. So at this time, I'll answer any questions that you might have.
One of my questions was asked about driver's ed, but you answered that one. So thank you. And I encourage parents, we have the best driving instructors, the best driving schools, so get them in that program. Um, that's how I drive so well. So, the video said that they were invited. When I think about an invite, I think I can decline if I don't want to come. Can you? For the Elevate, yes, for the elementaries in particular.
So we do invite, invite students, lots of students are invited to come, and we use data to determine who is invited. Of course, any parent who wants their, uh, child to participate in some school, we're not going to tell them that they can't, you know, apply for it, of course. But we do specifically invite students to, uh, participate in those programs and complete the application. And we do, um, kind of hunt some students down and make sure that we get those applications back.
So if, if, if I respectfully declined, you would hunt me down?
We would, we would encourage, especially if it's a student who could benefit from the o- opportunity. One of the things that we've done, Dr. Best, uh, last year and this year, is to make the summer learning opportunity fun and make it attractive to kids, so that it doesn't feel like, uh, it's arduous or, uh, you know, not an opportunity for fun. Yeah, so, uh, the team has worked really hard to, to bring it into like a summer camp environment, so the kids would look forward to going and not, you know, I don't want to go to summer school because it's more of what I did in the fall and the spring.
Okay, and one more. So you said the, the numbers will be reported at the end of the session.
Correct. We have, uh, seventeen hundred sixty-six applications right now. Is that right, Mr. Tyler? Did I get that number right? I'm impressed.
So what's our target?
What, that was going to be my question, this, this particularly, well, for elementary and for, um, secondary as well for, um, recovery. Um, because we didn't identify whatever, four hundred, so is, do we look at seventy-five percent of those? Or is there some goals in mind?
So I don't know that we have a specific target number, because that, again, the data is determining who we, uh, invite to, uh, the summer program at the end of third marking period, of course. Uh, as we close, uh, the school year, we'll take a look at additional students who may benefit from summer learning opportunities. We try to encourage families to apply early so we can get a number, because it has implications on, uh, staffing, has implications on transportation. Uh, so we have the plan, uh, in a nutshell, but, uh, by the second marking period and third marking period, teachers have a pretty good idea about the number of students who, uh, they have in their classrooms who would benefit from a summer, summer learning opportunity. So, uh, Mr. Tyler, did we specifically plan for a specific number? Between all programs.
Between all programming, so I believe we should meet that goal or exceed it right now. High school, the application, session one is supposed to June ninth.
Right.
And so we're waiting for SOL to finish, um, end of marking period grades to occur, and those numbers arrive will elevate as well.
Cause that's, that's when I was more interested in the secondary, um, recovery and that type of thing. Okay. Thank you.
But again, Dr. Rogers, you stated earlier, if a parent wants their child to attend.
We are not turning students away.
We've had that conversation.
Same.
Oh, I just wanted to thank you, um, piggyback on Dr. Best's questions. Do we have a sense of, I'm, I'm just, I'm just on the elementary side of, but you know, like the reading and math, probably elementary and middle school recovery. Do we have a sense of how many we invite versus how many accept the opportunity? Yeah.
Uh, we can get that information for you at the close. We will absolutely have a, a count of the number of students that were invited as opposed to the number who attend, as opposed to the number who complete the first day, uh, and the last day, uh, from beginning to end. So we will absolutely produce those data for you.
I wanted to ask in terms of, um, I know sometimes parents and I'm elementary, uh, will not send their children because of childcare issues. Do we have any partnerships with, in, uh, nearby organizations or, um, that may be tied to the school to help with childcare, um, if parents are needing?
Aware. I know Parks and Rec usually partners with, with schools, and I'm not sure where the team is. I can get that information with you with Parks and Rec. But generally, um, not as a practice, as of late, at least since I've been here.
Cause that might be a selling point, uh, for, for students to attend.
Okay, Mr. Brown.
So, uh, I'll make a comment and then ask a question. The comment is, uh, thank you for a very strong, uh, summer offering. Uh, hats off to the team for creating, uh, what looked like a set of very compelling camps when we talk as a board about, um, our, we were, been discussing our strategic goals and talking about a culture of advancement. And so this, uh, particular summer, set of, uh, summer camps and opportunities for students, I think is a, uh, very strong example of what a culture of advancement looks like in our schools. And so I want to say, uh, congratulations on, on that piece of it. And then the question is around, uh, what do the future years look like as far as being able to expand the number of offerings, especially in middle and high school for SOL verified credits, uh, and expanding the number of seats available for kids, you know, going into out years. I think our, our biggest year that we've ever had was about six thousand students or something like that. And how can we flex ourselves to get to that and beyond in the future, to expand the program, uh, for those number of students and offer more courses in the middle and high school area?
Sure, that's a really good question, Mr. Brown. I think this year we've expanded the STEAM camps. We have more students who, uh, are interested in summer learning opportunities as well as their families. Uh, and to Mrs. Alge's point, uh, when fall and spring school stops, as does childcare in many instances. And, you know, not all students need, uh, remediation opportunities, uh, or are interested in advancement opportunities because the schedule doesn't work. Uh, so we've tried really hard this year to make it more attractive to families, uh, to want to send their children to, um, some of the camps that we've, uh, created with our STEAM camps. Uh, I don't, I don't have the exact numbers, but I know we did expand. I asked the team to expand the opportunities and they, uh, absolutely rose to meet my expectation in terms of, uh, expanding. I'd be the STEAM, uh, part of those opportunities. The goal is to, um, remediate less students and provide more opportunities for advancement. So, um, we don't have hard, fast numbers, Mr. Brown, but that is the goal. Yes. Thank you.
Any other questions, board members?
I just, I just want to ask sort of a question and maybe, uh, do we capture if people choose not to go, why they're choosing not to go? And, or, you know, if there are hindrances to people participating when their students or families, when their students could really benefit from it? Just for information so we can work to, um, you know, improve on those, you know, minimize those hurdles and so that more.
So I don't know whether we capture them systemically. I know we capture data so that we can pull it. Mr. Tyler?
Um, we do capture the data, we can pull at the end, but we ask parents if you decline to come from Elevate. You got to decline and writing the reason why, stating that, and we document that online.
So we'll share that information when we bring a end of the program report, uh, some of the reasons why families declined.
That'll be helpful. Yeah, thank you. Anyone else? Well, we're excited for summer. We'll be in the buildings. Right, five point zero four, the attendance report, five point zero five, the membership report, five point zero six, construction report. Board members, you have received a copy of this report. Are there any questions at this time? Hearing none, we'll move on to five point zero seven, comments by the superintendent. Dr. Mitchell.
Thank you, madam chair. We celebrated all forty-two of our twenty-twenty-five, twenty-twenty-six Teachers of the Year at our annual banquet and announced three division-wide honorees that you see on the screen. Jenkins Elementary School's reading specialist, Michelle Young, was chosen as the elementary teacher of the year and the division-wide teacher of the year. Heinz Middle School's eighth-grade science teacher, Sarah Watson, has been recognized as the middle school teacher of the year, while Menchville High School's government and law teacher, Kylie Davis, was awarded the high school teacher of the year. So congratulations to all of our dedicated teachers of the year. A fun day that comes around every year, STEM Community Day, in collaboration with Christopher Newport University, will take place on May the thirty-first, right down the street at CNU. And we strongly encourage everyone to join us for a day of exploration and discovery. That's usually very well attended and it is a lot of fun. We want to recognize all national educational bosses. It is National Educational Bosses Week from May nineteenth to the twenty-third, and we want to extend a very big thank you to all of our leaders who make our schools and our operations run smoothly while supporting our employees and our students. Many of you are aware that May is Mental Health Month, and I would really like to emphasize the importance of nurturing our own mental health, taking breaks to recharge and asking for a listening ear or help when needed. We appreciate all the staff who work in this area and those who make sure that our students and our staff have the resources that they need. May is also National Speech Language Hearing Month. This provides an opportunity to raise an awareness about communication needs and the importance of those who work to ensure equal access to everyone for teaching and learning. Please be aware that you can help to support those in our school community who may be living each day with a speech, language, or hearing condition. Uh, upcoming on the calendar, schools and offices will be closed, May twenty-sixth for Memorial Day, for the holiday. Elementary and middle schools will have early dismissal, parents, um, early dismissal. And high schools will have half-day dismissal on June the sixth, the ninth, and the tenth. So again, early dismissal for elementary and middle school and half-day dismissal for high schools on June the sixth, the ninth, and the tenth. And the big day is coming very quickly. Our graduation schedule is set for an achievable dream high school. Their graduation will be held on June the fifth, right down the street at CNU's Ferguson Center. And then at the Hampton Coliseum, Menchville, Warwick, and Woodside High Schools will hold their graduations on June the seventh. And then we will finish it out with Denby and Heritage High Schools. They will graduate at the Hampton Coliseum on June the eighth. And students and parents, the last student day for this school year will be June the tenth. And the last day for our teachers will be June the eleventh. So this concludes my comments, and I cannot believe the school year is almost over.
Gone by quickly. Thank you, Dr.
And I see Raz Van Dan there smiling.
We will move on to item six, another opportunity to hear from the public. Do we have any cards? Now we will move on to matters by the school board. Tell us why you're so excited.
Good evening, everyone. As Dr. Mitchell said, I also can't believe the school year is almost over. To all of our students, I hope you have a wonderful rest of the school year, however short that is, as well as a wonderful summer. And to all of our graduating seniors, I wish you luck in the future. And I hope that you also have an enjoyable summer and a wonderful start to your adult lives. Um, we held our last Sage meeting on May seventh, and we elected the new student representative to the school board for next year. Her name is Kyla Leggett, and she is currently a junior at Menchville High School and was actually recognized this evening with Menchville, Menchville's archery team. I wish her the best as she co-chairs the student advisory board meetings with Dr. Mitchell and attends the school board meetings next year. Although I have one more school board meeting in June, I wanted to share that as for my plans for the future, I will be attending Princeton University next year. Thank you.
We are really excited. I could, we could end on a high note, just in there. Board members, shall we end on that high note? All right, we are, this meeting is adjourned.
All right, we are, this meeting is adjourned.